Plus frames to get rid of it, but we still get money back.
But it shouldn't be a net proceed.
Yes.
Correct. You'll you'll have a net proceed, but with that comes if we start modifying things that are already purchased. For example, if we take out kitchen equipment and we we exchange it for a piece of equipment that they need, we now have to change the electrical, the gas, or whatever's powering that, drains, plumbing, things like that, which in turn won't take a big chunk of that money out, but it still needs to be accounted for before I come back to council.
And give an actual figure.
An actual figure. What Sheriff said is a ballpark figure, so I don't want anybody to think that, hey, we're gonna get $60,000 back because that is close, but probably is not the exact number.
But but I'm just kind of looking for affirmation that if we're not gonna use something, we don't want it and we're willing to give it back at 25% cost.
That's your...
To me, that is your call, me and the commissioners, but is it is it feasible to like, you know, he's looking at the kitchen stuff right now. Are we looking at it all since we're so close to completion? Are you looking at everything in a ballpark so we know what you can flip-flop around and what we may do different? Or are we just doing it one section at a time?
We have we've had a considerable amount of coordination meetings with Sheriff, with the rest of the design team, with El Abadis as the architect, to go through and try and holistically dissect the project to see what you do and do not need. That way, we can offer up some of these. As the GCI cannot make any of those decisions, that hasn't been known by the commissioners because they hold the contract. We only do what you, the county, as a client, request us to do.
Thank you.
If I, is there someone that you recommend I could email? I'd like to put together the contract proactively. Have you reviewed it?
Well, you can send it to me and then I can get it to the three commissioners.
And give me the feedback on things I've been wrong proactively.
I'm not gonna read it. I'm not the mill. I'm not gonna critique it, no. I'll give it to the county attorney.
Okay.
We can also have Dustin with BW review it prior to going to the county, so you have the GC look at it too.
I'm sorry, you're emailing.
The auditor app, I'll spell it out, IAN.gov.
I appreciate that.
Just one dot. But I would like to suggest that Tony, you get a contact from these people if they're you're wanting them to be your IT. They're presented on February 5th, but the money doesn't count. You need to have that first, and then they're and we're going to have it that way because if you can't, we can't advertise it, we have to advertise it for the 15th.
Well, I think the thing I'm hearing is they wanna know a price for the whole county too.
Well, that's a different issue, they said.
Okay. So you're just talking about him to be our IT guy.
I'm just talking about the IT. We have to have that contract.
For this project.
Right. And anytime else, I mean, if you have something else, the contract has to be presented first.
Well, I mean, we're dealing with, I mean, like, he's he's highlighted a few other issues that are gonna come down the pike here with the subway, dispatch, and jail, and I think that all comes under the auspices of the contract, of the agreement, the engineering agreement.
Yeah, really, I I it's kind of three projects. We've got to design it. Okay, so there's a cost for that, which we outlined today. Once we have a design, then we have to we have to build it, and then we have to maintain it ongoing. Because it's all started because Ron said, you guys are gonna hold this building at some point in time, when there's a problem. The person that is going to be providing ongoing support needs to be the one that kind of made the decisions on how it was laid out, because what you don't want is me walking into, I have, I I'm not one guy, right? I have I have a team of nine engineers that are there available, so. But if they walk into somebody else's design with no prior knowledge, we're in a really bad spot. So when, all of a sudden, jail has a jail's got a problem, it's it's a lot worse than a donut shop having an issue, you know? So we need to, once we start getting the design laid out, we need to talk about ongoing support on that one side. But that, we would treat that as kind of a separate contract from this, if I'm saying that correctly.
Yes.
But it doesn't matter if he decides to have a IT afterwards. I mean, he can still stay with you.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right.
The encircuses. I'm here for those. Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Always love going last on the agenda. I, this morning, I wanted to be, have an opportunity to talk a little bit about the broadband investment that you all made as a body last year, and answer any questions, thoughts. We've had some good wins, some bad wins, in a sense of getting the project going, and wanted to provide a sense of transparency to the major investment that the county made. Before we get into it, well, the first and foremost is, since the county has made the investment into broadband, we've seen over $7 million of private investment from other broadband companies in the county. And I tried to make it as transparent as such that knowing that the government is making an investment into this sector, which in itself is a wrestling match we we deal with, but was to encourage other developments, I guess, other investments on the private sector side to kind of help the market. And I can tell you for sure, an announcement's coming through Geding's telephone company, a $3 million investment in Carroll County, Comcast will make an announcement here soon for fiber investment. And so we're encouraging, and even Sparklight is getting off the couch, I I we're seeing the fruits of that investment. And they're activating buying infrastructure, getting right-of-way permits on the county side. So we went through the broadband ready certification. Now that allows the EDC to see those permits in the county right-of-ways, so we know who's operating where and what investments are coming. And so we've kind of set the framework for this. And so, over the last year, we've we've worked hundreds of hours with our partners in Miami Cast RMC, Broadway Broadbent, and Carol White RMC, to figure out what what challenges are we facing to get this infrastructure built? What what challenges are we facing on the supply side, getting the actual infrastructure in the lot? And so I think over the last year, we've we've submitted thousands of pole attachment requests to Carol Miami Cast has, to Carol White RMC, to what we call, air quotes, "make ready," the infrastructure for deployment. And that's been a bulk, besides ordering the equipment, and I won't want to speak for the entities in themselves, but we had we had to get a system and an infrastructure ready for those improvements. And that's been the bulk of the work over the last year. And we have thousands of poles to go. We're talking about a system that is antiquated, and and so we're we're gonna see a lot more investment on the infrastructure grid over the next few years as this rolls out. So nothing has fundamentally changed in the agreement. We are in, we're in, we're actually in the confines of the contract that we engaged to. They've held and upheld their end of the bargain, and so we're hopeful that as poles get made ready, that we can begin actually constructing the the ring, getting splices and drops to homes. And and I think that this year is when we'll start to see, and we've indicated with them that 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 is our goal, phase one of this project by the end of 22, 24 and a half, drops to homes. And then we'll be able to move on.
Can you say that again?
So we have asked Broadway that they, to have substantial completion, or at least absolute completion of phase one of the loop by the end of 2024. So a lot of that we've covered over the last year is processes in which we're engineering the system, because there there is two different entities involved in this. It's the infrastructure of Carol White RMC, and they have their own grid and their own power plant. And now we're asking an internet service provider to attach to that power plant, and there's there's negotiations that had to happen with that. There's there's actually funds that have to be administered with that, right? So the end user, the ISP, has to pay that make-ready most times, or at least share in that cost. And so all those agreements, when we said go, had to come into effect, some of them tougher than than we we thought. And then, secondly, understanding the actuals power plant for Carol White RMC and in the in the how, how much, how quality, the quality of the plant itself, because it had not been comprehensively evaluated prior to this investment. And we found some, kind of just bumps and bruises in that as well. So we do have some weak points in the grid. I won't speak for them, but just it appears from our perspective on the oversight that we have a considerable amount of work to do if we're gonna get a power plant to support a broadband and infrastructure, even if it's government-supported. The private sector is gonna have even more trouble. So that's where we're at. Like I said, we have a committee within the EDC that's been working diligently on that. I report on this monthly to the board of directors. And we have, Ken Walton has has agreed, our treasurer, has agreed to be the point for the committee, so that I'm objective to our partners, right? So we have someone actually being able to ask the hard questions as we do, figure out how our time might work. So Broadway Broadband's here, Miami Cast RMC, representation to be able to answer any questions you may have. And I, yeah, I wanna open transparent conversation and wanted to give you that update, so.
When will those funds be returned to the county?
So as so as we're sitting now, we just we just received an invoice from Miami Cast, from Broadway Broadband to pay the first $771,000 of phase one expenses. So the EDC will be distributing those funds to the company in the next 30 days. It was approved this morning. And so that will begin the process of the contract for their deployment.
That's not one of my questions. When we invested the money into this project, we were told that the funds would be returned. When will we receive the return of the funds?
The contract has a 36-month timeline from the moment that they're paid for them to repay the funds. So once they start constructions, we'll have, they have three years to return the funds back to the coffer.
So it'll be another three years?
I don't think that's...
That's not quite correct.
Okay, sorry. I don't have to...
The the return of the funds starts within 12 months after the completion of the project.
But the whole amount has...
So once the project is completed and is live, then that's supposed to qualify them to return the funds. And there's a scale of how that happens as well. So three to five years then? Yes.
I think we had talked 36 months was was more so.
But the the trigger for the beginning of that is the completion of the project.
So the the goal for 2024, you said, was to complete that initial ring and to have fiber drop. Did I mishear that? Okay. Can you restate the goal for 2024?
The goal for 2024 is to have completion of phase one deployment for the ring, just phase one.
Okay, okay.
And so that would be, I don't have the mileage in front of me, so that is like, and I would say that's a minimum. It's like, they believe they can get further along, but we wanted substantial completion, and that's drops too, so.
So so with with that, is that including then lighting up that fiber and connecting homes, or is that just putting in the infrastructure for connection down the line, or at a different time? Because my understanding is you can set the infrastructure up, run the drops, but not light that fiber up, because you don't have the network on the backend to do it. So what are we talking about specifically?
And correct, Ron, that is lit up for that phase one, is that?
Yes.
So we, yeah, the goal isn't to just build 140 miles and drop 2,200 drops and not light up. So we're trying to, we're trying to light up each phase as they go into order.
Yeah.
And this is just phase one?
Correct.
Because I remember when the whole ball of wax came apart, we were looking at three years. So you are way far away from my jurisdiction to even starting.
Yeah, yeah. And I would tell you that the challenges we've met from in the last year, we understood that this was a generational infrastructure investment, and and the timing was was not a finger in the sky, but we we didn't know the engineering side of things, on what the poles were gonna be, the addition of those. And that dictates timeline on this whole deployment. And we're not, we're not starting ideal, I'll tell you that. I would tell you that the infrastructure that we're working with is is not, not good.
I'm just afraid. I'm just afraid that the infrastructure...
I think we need to transition to Broadway on technical questions, because I have a number of them. So, I mean...
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm just afraid that as slow as this is moving, by the time we all get done, that something else is already coming in to replace what's what you're doing. We're just so far behind.
There will be anybody else ahead of us. We've already got through the engineering process. Comcast says they're coming in, and they probably will. And the other, I'm not, but we are way far ahead of the engineering side of it. We're waiting on pole attachments.
You have Houston, that it's coming out. There are others.
They are wireless.
They are in.
They are wireless.
And those wireless, and we had that discussion, I I know they're here as well, but wireless, and we looked at this project and even recommended it to the county, the the premise was that wireless is a stopgap solution. And it will serve some families, like my mom, who's just strings TV. So that might be, that may work for her, because she doesn't have kids or family necessarily, unless my kids are there. But the point being is that we're building an infrastructure that is gonna be attached to homes, that when that older family moves, and a fam, new family wants to move in, that that wireless solution would not be something that would be a long-term solution for them. So, yeah, I I agree with you. Time is is allowing the market, but this stuff has to be engineered, it has to be scoped, and...
Well, so I I wanna hear a... We're the answer for the taxpayers. We've got a million and a half dollars tied up that, I mean, we said, or we we entered into this agreement, the anticipation is today we would be through phase, materially done in phase two, and we haven't launched. And I know you have constraints, and we'll get into that, but this word "engineering" keeps coming up over and over again, and it was my interpretation that the the plan was engineered.
The route was planned. You know, we were, we were never going to spend the money to actually engineer it all. We would make ready.
Right, but but, but you're talking about actual work, right? When you say, when you say make ready, you're talking about paying a hell of a toll or replacing it.
Engineering too.
Let me just chime in real quick. So when you say engineering, that's that's including driveouts by our engineering company that go to every single pole, they measure every single height. So like, and what Ron was saying is, we're not gonna pay before we sign the contract to have that done. You're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars of the spend in engineering costs. So if we would've paid that before we signed the contract with Carroll County, then we could, and you guys decided to move with somebody else, now we would've been tied into hundreds of thousands of dollars that we paid for.
And I understand that, but my question is, like, that was all assumed in that one-year timeline?
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, a one-year timeline to phase two substantial completion, right?
Mm-hmm.
So when we entered into the agreement, you knew that you would, you would have some engineering?
We did.
And, but you would enter into that engineering and still achieve...
But the engineering has been done a long time. We have...
And this is where I'm trying to, this is where I'm trying to get to.
Yeah, and so we submitted everything to Carol White RMC.
Yes.
March of '23 was when everything was submitted to them.
Right.
So moving on, we're, there, I actually just got an email while sitting here from Carol White, saying that they've started on phase one make-ready, which make-ready, for those of you that don't know, is where they go and change out the poles. So if we're trying to attach on a pole and can't get our height, they're gonna change that pole to something that's taller, 30 foot to 35, 35 to 40.
But they still have thousands...
I live in the part of the county that I said this, when you first brought this up. I said, how long is it gonna take to get in the the hills of the valley of Tecumseh Bend, Horseshoe Bend, the extreme? And I was told three years. If you move at the pace that you're moving at now, I won't see it 10 years. And I'm guaranteeing...
It's not the pace that we're within.
It's the infrastructure.
My my pedal's to the floor. I'm gonna work as hard as I can to the county.
So who are waiting on that? I mean, who's holding up?
Carol White, RMC.
Whole replacement.
A local company?
It's all their poles that we're...
A local company is holding this all up?
Yes. I mean, so as far as we're concerned, I would, I mean, we would be full boreheaded. We're, we're, we're just putting the fiber and strand and and going along with it.
You understand where I'm coming from, Jake?
I do.
Ten years. It's been, ten years. Something else is going to be here.
And 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 I would tell you that we, either going into it, weren't aware of the current infrastructure plant and its condition. And I don't think, I don't think...
I mean, that's a, that's a big statement.
Well, one, one thing, in, in, for the last few days, we've, we've had a boring company that worked for us, who went out of business. We have never bought a boring machine, nor have we ever owned it. But right now, we're being pushed because of the limits that we have. Because here's not the only limit that we have. We've got ICP, we've got Next Level, we've got all kinds of things going on. So we are going to purchase a back machine and a drill, so that when we run into situations like this, that we can move. Because we don't need to worry about pole attachments. We don't need to, but you're talking about a significant investment when you're talking, you know, $600,000. I have to justify that.
We're talking about a significant investment of money.
But of interest, of an interest for you. Look.
And I'm trying to...
I mean, that money is not ours. You're giving it to us to build it, and then we're going to pay it back to you. I mean, so it's not like we, we, that you're not going to get it back. I mean, there, at some point, there will be a call for us to give you the money back. But, I mean, but it means that it's there. But we are moving. Everything we've got done, we're ready. And to put up 10 miles, I mean, we have, this construction company that we use can put up five miles today.
Wow.
So, you know, that's not lighting it up, but that's just getting it in the air.
I understand. And I appreciate you guys being here and answering our questions. And and it is noted that Carol White RMC has been notified of this and is not here at this meeting. So I appreciate your intestinal fortitude to sit here and answer her questions. But what I'm trying to get to the, to the answers on here is, so you you had, you had engineering done in March. That means that all of these poles that are inadequate had been identified in March. So we're talking now 10 months, nearly 10 months of time between the identification and now. So logistically, how, I mean, what has fallen apart in there?
They basically, what happened, first is they double engineered it. So we sent it to them, and then they send it to to their own engineering company. But then, at that turn, was relooking at everything our engineering company did, charging us for that, and then basically having that engineering company do the make-ready. So that's the biggest disconnect on it. I mean, we are, we, the first round, and we, one reason we didn't expect this, because we've already built, what, 15 miles in the Cast area on Carol White, and we did not have this issue. But it wasn't the amount of poles being submitted like we did. I mean, we submitted thousands. So they got overwhelmed, they pushed it on, and then that's where we've been stuck at in limbo.
And there are still thousands of poles yet to go?
Yep.
Correct.
But, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I mean, and another thing, we, we just had a meeting yesterday. Our engineering company has actually proposed to Carol White that we put intermediate poles. If that happens, then it'll be our own company that we can, we can manage and actually send them out, and they will put intermediate poles in, and it'll be a lot quicker than what the way that it's being done right now. So we are looking at different avenues. We're not trying to just sit back and pick our feet up and say, oh, it'll happen when it happens. We're practically trying to find a solution and trying to find a way to make it happen. It's...
Why, why, I mean, I know you can't answer for somebody else, but why would somebody do that?
So I, in, in short...
I mean, let me ask you specifically, why would somebody re-engineer a plan that you're giving engineered plans?
So, to start, they only had, they, this is not a normal thing where, like, somebody has to go out and look at poles every day. I mean, in our shop, our operations director does it, and he also manages all the people. And it's the same with Carol White. Their line superintendent was the one doing this. And he also does their staking as well. So he's doing staking, which is what goes out and decides where lines, you know, go in, go into somebody's house. He's managing a whole line crew, and now he has 5,000 poles he has to go review. So I'm not making excuses for anything, or how it, how it's happened. But if you can see where maybe a operations director, we probably get five or 10 pole attachment requests per month. And now you take that and multiply it, you know, and now he's getting, now he has 5,000. So I think it was an overwhelming thing, where they were like, I don't know how to get this done in the time that they need it done. But then that's when they went to the other engineering company to assist that guy to get that done.
And they, they washed their hands of it, basically.
So they have no time limit to finish this, or we don't mean that.
No, they are, and they are out of contract. They are way out of that.
Any clue of what phase one, two, or three will be...
Well, phase one, it started. Make-ready should take a few weeks. And they'll go in, I don't think, we had maybe...
Yeah, I think, yeah, I just, I think what we're showing here is, is that there was no defined process in place to handle this. And for a lack of whoever or whatever, once we get the process in place and the people activate it, and then the process and deploying the the phases will go much faster. So I think this is not a phased problem, but this is a preparatory...
But, well, I mean, and I appreciate that, that, that point, but like, you guys, this is not your first rodeo of pulling fiber on our own pole, on any pole.
On our own poles, it went up like that. But we've had to deal with, I mean...
But you dealt with other, other people previous to this.
Carol White has actually been more of a problem to us than Duke.
I mean, that's a very telling, I mean, I...
And I think a lot of it is...
I'm sure somebody just cringed.
One of the disconnects that happened was when, when we submitted the information. They didn't particularly like the way that the information was submitted, but they didn't tell us. So that's one of the reasons they sent it to their own engineering company. And that's one of the reasons why it slowed it down completely. But I get back to here, we have a pole contact contract. They are way out of...
So what, so you...
They should've had it done by June.
So, I mean, in essence, I mean, would you consider that an breach of that, or what's...
Yeah, there's no, there's no repercussions. They do, it's kind of funny. When you get into the utility business, just like, we're doing with Delphi, and do a pole attachment there, there's a whole kind of, like, whatever that company's name is, Sparklight is, on, illegally attached, the hundreds and hundreds of poles.
It's true.
You can't make them get off. Duke won't do it. They're Duke poles. We could go in there literally and take their stuff, but then we would be taking pickles' internet away from them. And then we've gotten, I mean, critical costs of cleaning all that up and movement. So there's, and then like, in Carol White's, there's nothing other than not pay the pole attachment agreement, which is $17 a pole. I mean, every time, every pole we attach to, we have to pay $17 a year for the pole. So you're talking thousands and hundreds, $100,000 every year we're gonna have pole attachments. So we can withhold that. We can, but for what we sue them for, I'm not, you know, I don't know what kind of compensation that would be. And plus, it's our sister company.
No, but I'm, but I'm saying, you contemplated this. They entered in an agreement with you. They've reached that agreement, and the the net-net of that is that now, a process that would've started at June at the latest, is now 13 months down the road. I I just wanna like, make this stuff crystal clear for everybody that, I mean, like...
And unless you have consequences to reach.
And I guess, one thing, I want to assure the council, if it comes to, we're going to fulfill our obligation. But if we have to give you the money back, we'll give you the money back. That's not what we want to do. We will fulfill the obligation. So you've always had that right. And we're gonna push as hard as we can to get this in. It's like, we're going to buy drilling equipment. I mean, for instance, if if we go in and put a mile in of drilling in, and under, it's $60,000. That's just labor. We can build overhead. This is why we wait. This is why we wait on these pole attachments. We can build overhead with material and using a contractor for $25,000 online. So that's why we've held off on trying to spend the money on the other end, because it's just, I mean, it would quadruple our, the cost of our project. But we are at the point now we have to do it. We are going, and and the drill will end up paying for itself because of situations like this. Because if, you know what I mean, we we have this problem with, like I said, in Delphi. We've had this problem with Cast, or Logan's Port and Tilties, and we've resolved that one. Duke, Duke's not easy, but they have the whole system already set up. It's called a span system. You go in there, you do it all, and then they they actually tell you, and they're all pretty on the spot on when they're going to give you the details. Another thing that came up is, we should've already had, we need 100 gig feet from Henry Street. Henry Street is where the data center is, the biggest data center in Indiana, that we've signed a contract with, with INF, who was bought by Zales, which is probably one of the largest companies on fiber companies in the world three years ago. We never, they never gave us service. So we've had to scramble to find service from Wintec, Verycom. So we've been, you know, in working on things like that. So this is, with the sheer amount of money the government has thrown in the fiber, it has basically turned it into the Wild, Wild West right now, because everybody's... Because everybody's, it's hard to get material, because everybody's wanting material. You've got spring up, um, companies that are just springing up everywhere to manufacture this material, which a lot of it is turning out to be inadequate, and, um, so it's, it's, the government, you know, I, I like the, how they thought through this process, but they, their oversight is terrible, and the way that they disperse their money is terrible. You know, if you, the pandemic was a lot easier to get your money in that because it was an emergency with this event.
So, right now, today, the problem has not been resolved with Carol White.
It, yes, no, and it, right now, we, as soon as they get this make ready done, they've got all the other engineering that they're working on. So they'll, they'll move to the next phase, as soon as, I mean, they're, they should be working on the next phase already.
So, so the poles are not done for phase one, or they are?
The make ready are not done. They're not. They were supposed to start January eighth, and of course, the, the temperatures, they've not gotten as far as what they wanted on those make readies. But they can do make readies in, in less than a month, so.
Beautiful.
And as soon as that happens, and we may even actually be able to start right behind it, depends on the poles out, and then run behind. I mean, we're going to have QC do it, um, so they'll put it up, that'll go in the air really fast. And hopefully, and I, I would never guarantee you that they're going to have phase two completely, you know, there's part of it done by the time we get phase one done. I doubt that happens, but hopefully it'll be close.
So I, I, I mean, just, we're pushing as hard as we can, uh, we're sensitive to the fact that the county made one of the largest investments. We knew that there was going to be challenges, we're, we're crossing into a space of quality of place and life to have this connectivity in a manner that we are, and, and it's going to be, it's, it's going to be done. And, uh, and so I just, I wanted to be able to have transparency on some of the bumps and bruises of this process. And like I said, I don't think that's, I don't believe that's an indication of, of deployment speed. We know, we know the industry tells us we can deploy it at a faster rate than, at a fast rate. It's the processes, the approvals, and all the setup that has been the clobbering effect of this timeline early. And so, um, as we bring updates to the council, to commissioners as well in the next couple of months, um, I, I, I think all of us are been in the same meetings, that this thing can speed up and, and get it to where it's in a better place for deployment, so.
I will make one, I'd like to make a comment about the county, the area plan. Commission's been very good to work with, they have, as soon as we submit, you know, permits, they're getting approved. I mean, within that week, if we turn them in on a Wednesday, we normally get them turned around by Wednesday till the next week, or, or less. So, just want to put that out there for you guys, that the county, the area plan is doing very good.
If anybody knows anybody in the railroad that you can help there. We're looking, we're looking, as soon as we cement six to eight months, to get a railroad permit.
And, and I would welcome the council on any of our update calls as well. So if you just say, hey Jake, I want to jump on the next update call, like, we are, we are all ears, we're not, there's no barriers to that.